Pot.
Oh, the pot.
Yeah, it's there.
Can't wait to.
I'm getting better with that. Whoa. Power driven going on there.
That's you, Richard.
The great Oz right there.
It's the wizard.
Man behind the curtain.
Counsel, you guys ready? Let's do it. Okay, we'll get tonight's council meeting underway for September 27th, 2020. If you could join me, please stand for the prayer and the pledge allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings in each of our lives, for the very world we live, and for the health and strength that you have given us as a city. Continue to lead us with your humility, watching over those who devote their time in our community, and also those who need your compassion, understanding, and guidance in times of challenge. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cheryl, if you could call the roll.
Mr. Boast?
Here.
Mr. Carey?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Works?
Here.
Chairman Morales?
Here. You all should have received the minutes for August 23rd. Do you have any corrections, additions, deletions? Hearing none, the minutes will stand as distributed. You also receive the budget report for January 1st through August 31st, 2021. Mayor, if you could give us a quick update where we stand?
Sixty percent of the budget year has been completed. Our revenues are at eighty-six percent, expenditure is forty-nine percent, so we're performing better than budget in both categories.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Under communications, we have two items tonight. The first being Mayor Sherry Capello informing council of the reappointment of Arya Karmazin to the City of Lebanon Planning Commission for a four-year term effective September 14th, 2020. And Mayor, if you could tell us a little bit.
So Arya is a registered architect, which is a great resource to have on a planning commission, and this would represent the beginning of his second term. So we appreciate him agreeing to serve.
Absolutely. Considering it's a voluntary position, that's... We can't find enough people nowadays. Counsel, any questions for the mayor on this communication?
Just that it's 2021.
Twenty, did I say twenty? Thank you.
That's right.
Correction, 2021. I'm glad you're listening tonight, Dan.
I am.
All right. And any questions from our audience? Or press in attendance? None, okay. Again, moving on to the second communications. Director of Administration Assistant to the Mayor Melissa Kinyonas transmitting notice of the 2022 minimum municipal pension plan contributions. Police being nine hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred and one dollars. Fire, two hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and forty dollars, and the non-uniformed zero. And Mayor, if you could...
So I won't go into as much detail as I did on Thursday night at the pre-council meeting, but this is just something that we annually are required to do. We need to put in at least the minimum amount in order to keep the plan sound, and that is based on our two-year actuarial valuation that gets completed by an actuary.
And these fluctuate year to year.
Yes.
We talked about that on Thursday. Okay. Any questions from counsel? And anything from our guests in attendance tonight or from the press? Okay. None. All right, moving on, we have two resolutions tonight. The first being Resolution Number 39, authorizing the proper officials of the City of Lebanon to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the North Lincoln Avenue Bridge over the Quiddapahilla Creek Project. And do I have a motion for...
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 39.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Richard, thank you. And Mayor, if you could tell us a little bit about the bridge.
Sure, so our original agreement was from 2013, and PennDOT believes there were too many changes that needed to be revised in the body of the standard agreement, and so they've requested a new agreement, and it's mainly to really true up with the engineering portion of the agreement. Our original agreement with PennDOT was a pilot with six or eight local municipalities in the state, and it was a part of a bridge replacement program where they thought they could possibly get a better price if they combined and put together several bridges in the state. And because of entering into the pilot agreement, normally our portion of the cost is ten percent, but with this particular pilot, they lowered it to five percent as an incentive to be a part of the pilot program. So the total cost is two point two-six million, and our five percent would represent a hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. PennDOT has already performed the environmental portion of the project. They're finalizing the design, and they're currently working on the utilities. We have a transformer pole in the right-of-way, so they're working through that. And our estimated let date is spring of 2023, and it should take just a few months to complete it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Any questions from counsel? Okay. From our guests in attendance and attendants tonight and from the press? Okay, none. Cheryl, if you could call the vote?
Mr. Boast?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Works?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, five, four, none against. Resolution Number 39 carries. And moving on to our second resolution tonight, Resolution Number 40, approving specifications for requests for proposals for professional auditing services for the year ending December 31st, 2021, with the options to extend through December 31st, 2023. And do I have a motion for Resolution Number 40?
I'd like to move for the adoption of Resolution Number 40, please.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dan. All right, the motion, the resolution has been moved and seconded. Mayor, if you could give us a little rundown?
Sure, so this is something that we do every three years. We put out an RFP for auditing services. Our contract this year is thirty-two thousand, so we anticipate it being probably a little higher than that just based on the cost of services has increased mainly due to COVID. We did put out an invitation to approximately a dozen agencies in our region. That includes all of the accounting firms in Lebanon County and in the immediate, like, sister county area.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Any questions from counsel? And from our guests in attendance and from the press?
Who is the current auditor for the city?
Barbara Kane and Thornton, Thornton and Barbara Kane.
Any other questions? Okay, Cheryl, if you could call the vote?
Mr. Boast?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Works?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, five, four, none against. Resolution Number 40, so moved. Moving on, we have one ordinance tonight, and that's Bill Number 12, and I am not going to read this entire ordinance. We'll be here all night. But ordinance, or Bill Number 12 is basically of the City of Lebanon, Lebanon County, Pennsylvania, setting forth its intent to issue one or more series of general obligation bonds of the city in the aggregate principal amount of two million three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And do I have a motion for ordinance or Bill Number 12?
Like to make a motion for Bill Number 12?
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Wayne, thank you. Okay. And Mayor?
So I'm actually going to allow Ryan and Peter to provide the explanation, so...
Okay.
Do you want to... I'm not, is it on?
You have to, you have to turn it on.
I did turn it on. I think I hear it.
You're good.
Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Ryan Hotenstein, working as a financial advisor for the City of Lebanon on this transaction. As we discussed, I believe it was last month, we were going to be working with RBC, putting all the documents together necessary for the bond sale, which we did this morning. We had the bond sale today. The results came in very favorably for the city with the average interest rate, if you wanted to think about it, through the maturity of 2051, fixed at about two point three percent. So overall, you know, certainly very good borrowing terms for you. There will be no interest rate risk from you once you approve this this evening. They will be locked in, and we will move forward with closing. With the approval of the ordinance tonight, you will also be approving signing of the bond purchase agreement, which outlines all the terms, the yields of maturities, and the principal amounts of those maturities moving forward. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, or if you have any questions for Pete on the ordinance, we're happy to answer any of them.
Well, Ryan, we appreciate you coming out.
Sure.
Appreciate you coming out tonight, and at a fixed rate of two point three, I mean...
It's a blended rate, but yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's pretty good. Counsel, any issues or concerns or questions? Pretty much past that.
Just to add that the annual average payment would be a hundred and seven thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-four cents each year.
Which I know budgetarily, you, you had no issues with that, Mayor.
I wanted to keep it under a hundred and ten. Thank you, Ryan and Peter.
Yes, thank you both.
Absolutely.
Chris, do you have a question?
Any other questions?
No.
And I will open it up to our guests. Any questions?
How many bidders were there for the bonds?
Well, there are a number of purchasers, so there's institutional buyers and retail, and also some being brought into stock, but in the case of Lebanon, all three of those participated.
And you would say, I mean, the market was receptive to...
Yes, the market was receptive. Over the last eight days, we've had a little bit of slowing, about eight basis points in the municipal, but still overall, very good, and we're able to get the transaction completed.
So let's quick get this signed, all right?
Any other, any other questions this evening? Hearing none, Cheryl, if you would call the vote?
Mr. Boast?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Works?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, five, four, none against. Bill Number 12 is so moved. And that covers the agenda this evening. I'll now open it up to basically counsel. Any issues or concerns for the city?
I just have a quick question unrelated to the bond, but tangential. Everything is on track, on schedule with City Hall?
Yes.
Beautiful.
Yes.
Thank you.
And any...
I'll get, I'll send you an update. So they're basically going to start the drywall for the second floor the end of this week. They're roughing in the first floor right now, and hopefully we'll be starting drywall shortly thereafter. The steel will be in next month for the garage roof, so that's good news. Fiber optics are being run.
Any, any other unforeseen concerns with the, with the building project itself, Mayor? And I would be talking anything major that concerns the city.
Every day, you know, it's something that has to be decided, but we've pretty much worked through all the things. I mean, I know, you know, some of the pricing came in higher than what we initially thought when we started the project, but we had a ten percent contingency, which, you know, has helped, and we were able to put a little bit of American Rescue money in for COVID-related items, so that gave us another, just a small little buffer, so we'll be, we'll be fine. We're still obviously under what I, I wanted us to be for our annual repayment, but knock on wood, because I don't want to jinx us, but it's, it's a construction project.
I mean, all, all things considered, the size of the project, you know? That's great to hear. That's good news. Okay.
Yeah, it's not interfering with PAC, so they're able to have their classes and...
I see a lot of activity over there.
Yeah. Not as much as before COVID. There are a lot of students doing virtual online learning right now, but, oh, I don't have it with me. He gave me the number of students, and I don't have this slip with me. I don't want to say it incorrect, but I, I can let you know then. I don't have that paper with me.
Okay. Any other questions from counsel?
Chairman Morales, I'd like to say a few things if I can.
Absolutely.
And maybe I can have some help from your staff. First of all, I want to thank you guys again for excellent job. Thank you for all that you've done. And Mayor, your staff and your finance staff putting all this together in the time to help Lebanon be the place to grow. Thank you. What I'd like to share is just a few things tonight. The first is, and Ms. Robin, if you can help me, is the full yard waste is, is coming up, okay? And if you go to the city website, there's a big thing you can print off that has all the rules and regulations. It's not hard, folks. Cut up all your leaves and trees and stuff and, and put it out there by seven o'clock, Monday, October 18th. No leaves, okay. Listen, no. Believe it or not, I actually saw some people today with it out on the street already. Can we just follow some simple rules? But listen, you know, Robin, do you want to share about it, you know?
So we do this bi-annually. We have one in April and one again in October. And with our MS4 program, it is critical that people do not put it out in the street prior to the election weekend. And it is for just casual cleanup. It's not for land clearing. We have an area where I was just informed that they took two retired trees down and have them out of curbside. So, you know, we've had to go out and educate them as well. So this is the standard cleanup. The old flowers, you know, take the dirt off the roots. Those can go out. Old plants, do not take ornamental grass during this cleanup. And leaves will be running from November the 1st to December the 5th. So that's an entirely different collection, so please keep them separated.
And don't put any bricks or cement block to... Let's, let's, the safety of the guys is most important, so, so let's...
And the equipment.
Yeah, yes. So let's be smart about that. And while we're talking about the waste and all that stuff, I just really would like to appeal to people in Lebanon. We have a lot of rain. You know, the ground is like a sponge, but, you know, instead of complaining about it, I can walk down a half a block to that storm sewer and clean off the clutter and the leaves and the junk real easy and put it in a little bag, and the water's flowing so much better. So, so don't do something, be part of the city, be part of a helper, be a helper B. And, 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 you know, if, if you see a storm sewer clogged up or something, you know, with all the gunk on top, just even if you get a little bit of it out or something, it's really nice. You know, if, if people can do that, that's great. The CLA put a huge banner up at Ninth and Cumberland. It has a, a whole rundown of the events for the holiday, holidays parade, so if you have a chance to check that out. Again, I keep promoting Facebook, City of Lebanon PA government. There's lots of information. I want to thank the mayor and her staff and Joe, your department, for posting some of, like, when we had this rain and roads closed and stuff, they had a lot of information about that up there right away. There, there's a lot of stuff available on the city Facebook site of things that are happening right now or going on. So don't, you know, encourage people to continue to look at that. Chief, I, I don't want to get too far ahead, but because half the mothers in Lebanon and surrounding area are already asking, what's trick-or-treat night?
So is it 28th?
Thursday night.
Yes, Thursday night, 28th.
Thursday night.
Six to eight.
Six to eight. Okay. So, because, you know, they were, they were starting to ask it like three weeks ago, you know, so...
We'll put something on Facebook.
Okay, that's good, yeah, yeah. But that's, but there you got it out, and it's out there now.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. And, and that's, I believe, agreed upon by all the police chiefs, and that's for the whole county and the city, right? Yes. So, so that's good. Saturday, we're into October already. Saturday is the multicultural festival downtown. It's, it's on Facebook, it's around. This is a great event. They are closing Eighth Street between Chestnut and Cumberland. It's from one o'clock in the afternoon till seven at night. And they're going to have also... Mayor, do you know a little bit about some of that?
So we're, we're going to have some bands, some food, not a lot of food, more music than food, but it's still going to be a great time, and we have a special presentation. We'll be doing it at six o'clock or right before six o'clock. You know, our friend Joshua has won more gold medals. He has won more gold medals at Junior Olympics, and we are going to honor him and have it be his day in the City of Lebanon. So if anyone from counsel would like to come out, be there by six.
Joshua was on the Senate floor today.
Yes.
Okay. So that is, that is this Saturday, okay?
Yes, and right before that. That starts at one and goes to probably dusk. At noon, DVI is having a duck derby, and I'll be involved with that. So from, on Seventh Street at the Quiddy.
Also, at the multicultural festival, Family First Health will be there from one to five o'clock with their mobile trailer providing free walk-in COVID-19 vaccines. And if you want any more information, you can look up COVID-19 trailer at Eighth Street Multicultural Festival. Okay? And so they will be there, they will be there. So there's, there's a lot happening. There's a lot happening in Lebanon, and, and there's many more events also that are going on at the same time and the weekend all around us. So enjoy the weather, enjoy our community. You don't have to go far, and they'll have food at the festival, but there's also plenty of food at our local restaurants and also inside the market till three o'clock, too.
And I believe, I need to find the email. I just got an email over the weekend. I believe they're having a ribbon-cutting for the South Sixth Street Playground Basketball Courts, but I have to confirm that.
October 2nd at two o'clock.
At two o'clock. So lots of things to keep everybody busy. So we just encourage everyone to become more part of our community. So Chairman, thank you very much.
Wayne, thank you so much.
Sir, I do have one item that I'd like to put out. So the Water and Sewer Authority, they're going to be closing and detouring traffic tomorrow off of Quentin Road. They're doing a repair that's right in the center of the intersection at 798 Quentin. So they'll be putting signs up by, before 6:00 AM tomorrow, and they anticipate that the street will be closed most of the day, and they'll contact your office when they reopen. So their detour plan is to detour from Quentin 1 to Cornwall Road.
And I did get that email, Robin, thank you. Okay. Anything else from counsel? Okay. And I'll open it up to visitors tonight? Yes.
I have, I have a concern. In August...
Pat, your address, of course?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
This is important. My name's Patrice Warrior. I live at 521 Canal Street. I received a letter from the Department of Public Safety, and I'm a little upset about it for several reasons. Couple of years ago, I had met with Mr. Hensonheiser, who lived on Fourth Street, and we went on a tour around the city, and he was showing me property issues that he had concerns with. We took the pictures, and at that time, I brought them, over a hundred of them, to council. And when I brought those here, there was, I had, I don't know if anything was ever done about them, but there were a lot of issues with furniture on the porches and garbage cans overflowing, pools in the backyard and whatnot. Then again, there was a guy on Canal Street who had a problem with the people across the street from him. They lived on Second at Canal, and they had stuff on the porch, and he wanted something done about that. At that time, I had brought that to council. And after the one meeting when I brought the pictures and everything, I had been criticized by a former councilman about my sanity and why I would do something like that. Well, on the 24th, when I received my letter, it was because I did have a sofa on my porch. Now, I wasn't going to break the law or try and get away with anything. However, I guess we can pick and choose what ordinances we'd like to follow because at, most of you may remember, in November of 2019, at the budget meeting, Commissioner Troutman said that he wasn't going to follow an ordinance because he didn't agree with it, although former Councilman Warrior wanted the inspections done. Now, first place, I didn't really, that was not at my suggestion. That was at former employees here who told me about it, and some former retired career firefighters that told me about it. And at that time, the career firefighters were being annihilated in the news for negatively. And so they came to me and asked me for help, and I brought that suggestion, which he did not agree with and wanted to take it out of the thing. So anyway, that being said, I am impressed that he heard what I had to say, and I'm also impressed that somebody listened to me and remembered it. Now, on to my problem, though. The sofa was on my porch. I did have arrangements for somebody to pick it up on the Saturday of the 21st. Because of COVID, the holler didn't have a driver, and so he told me he would have to pick it up the next week. Well, I got the letter then on the 24th, and so to stay in, in, within the timeframe of the warning of the letter, I had it removed by someone else on Thursday night and called him here and had it done. Said that I had it done. The biggest problem I have with all of this is the fact that that letter did not come, was not addressed to me. I am the owner of that property. I have been since 2013 of July. The current letter was sent to Jesse and Sterling Wolf. Now, I am not a computer person, and most of all of you know that. It takes a little bit of a Google search to find out that all three of those people are deceased. Therefore, they couldn't have owned it. And I'm sitting here just about every month repeatedly since 2013. I bought this house while I was on council, and I changed my address with City Clerk's office, so someone should know that I owned it. They could have given me a call and said, what's the problem here? That's okay, though. I'm not looking for any kind of special treatment, but I do want to know why I'm not listed on that deed as the owner due to the fact that the mortgage is paid in full. I owe nothing on it.
You would need to talk to the title company.
No, the letter came from the city. I got my stuff from the title company.
Does the title company have used the home record?
Okay.
But the city doesn't...
Pat, I'm sure we can, we can take care of this. I'm, I'm positive.
So I would have to talk to the inspector who sent the letter to find out...
Jared Fish.
Okay.
He knows me, too.
Okay, well, I will talk to him, and I'll find out why, where he got the information from, which database, because they should be going through the assessment office, which should have current records. Now, we did just get a new update because we, we got a new link because the, the county switched from one database to a newer version, different software. So we'll have to see what's wrong, and we'll definitely make sure we correct it, so I apologize for that, Pat. The other thing is, we work many times. We're fairly reasonable. If you would have reached out to us when you got the letter and said, hey, I already have arrangements made because of COVID, this got postponed a week, can you give me extra time? We would have worked with you, Pat, so I'm, I'm sorry that you had to make other arrangements regarding...
Are you going to ask for any special favors?
Well, it's not a special favor, it's just we, we work with you. You had a, a situation with COVID that your person who was going to remove it, I mean, those are, that's a very valid excuse, and we would, we would accept that and work with you on that. Regarding the inspection program, I don't know if we want to get into that or not, but we are doing the inspections. we are doing the inspections as part of our fire safety program. Uh, we're trying to get through the, all of the businesses first, one time, and because it has been so many years, uh, prior to my administration, from when, and there was a bad taste in everyone's mouth with how that program had been administered, and we're trying to establish some good, positive rapport with our businesses and go in and educate and show the value of the service that we're providing with that inspection, and how it can greatly improve their, not only fire safety, but possibly for their insurance and, and whatnot. So it is correct that we're not charging that fee at this time, because again, it had been quite a, a bit of time, and we wanted to go through at least one time and get everyone acclimated, made it to the program, and then we would reevaluate it, and then at that point have, you know, possibly charge at that time. But we wanted to show our taxpayers, our business owners, the value of what we could provide to them, and get their cooperation to let us in and, and to do the inspection, and, uh, we also trained all of the firefighters so that they're actually more educated than were, than what they were when they first started the program, so that they have some credentials behind, you know, their name when they go in, they can explain, and they understand what they're looking at. Anything more to add to that?
I would like to add, Ms. Warrior, I've been here a long time, and I can tell you as a rank-and-file fireman, um, we used to go out and do inspections, and the city feasted on these ones, churches, the bigger businesses, and the inspections weren't followed up, and I'm not going to sit here and, and pune and criticize the previous administration from over a decade's past, it's kind of an old, old story, but I have to tell you, we did make a major change in software that the state made us do in two thousand twelve. We still have not gotten through the entire business inventory of the city. We've done over seven hundred fire inspections this year, which is our, which is the highest ever. These take a lot of time, there's follow-ups, the first inspections are always the most difficult because the cooperation is lower. We're having a really good, a good time with this, and I'm, and I'm very pleased with where we've gotten, but to bill, and this is what upset me as an employee, talk about morale and complaining about inspections, to this day, we still cannot bill in an equitable and a fair manner. Not to mention, who's going to take care of that billing? Who are we going to pay to bill and audit the accounts? We wrote off hundreds and hundreds of, of fire inspection invoices that weren't paid. We had a hell of a lot of cleaning up to do, and this stuff takes an enormous amount of time because we've got to continue. One of the, one of the worst things, hardest things that we've had to do up here, and I've said it to the mayor often over the years, is improving. We conduct business, but improving is just such a monstrous task to try and take it to the next level, because everything, we're so tight, we're so, we just don't have any room for wiggle room, and trying to improve is immensely hard. But if anyone's, if anyone wants to complain about the inspection program the way it is, it's just because they disagree with, they disagree with having a fire inspection. It's, it's by far the most credible and the most accurate inventory of businesses, and to get full ISO credit, I would love to see us get to every business once a year. We still don't know if we have the capacity. It's huge. And Mr. Bauer sits back there, his business, I'm sure, has been inspected this year twice. Oh, you didn't follow instructions the first time?
Yeah, no, no, no.
Oh.
Second, second year.
But anyways, that's-
You passed.
I, 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 I think our inspection program is, is doing very, very well, and, um, we're, sometimes it garners complaints because people don't like us there, and sometimes people, people like us there. But glad to share the current numbers with you because they're the best they've ever been in my time.
I don't think I was complaining about the, the inspections.
I didn't think you were.
I think I was complaining about your statement.
Well, you mean, you mean back when you thought we should be building?
In two thousand and nineteen. November of two thousand and nineteen.
Well-
But that's okay, we're going to let it go.
That, we didn't-
I'm just saying that at this point now, this irritated me, I thought of that, and that's why I'm here complaining, because I didn't say, I don't feel like going along with that thing, that ordinance. I do agree with it. I just happened to fall in the crack of it, and I was between two haulers, but I got somebody else then to get it out.
Okay. Pat, and we, we-
I'm not going to believe it.
And we, we do appreciate the fact that you, you changed haulers and took care of that, so I personally want to thank you for that, and we, we will definitely take care of that, that address change. Okay. Any other questions?
On the issue of inspe, I'm, there, there are a number of different inspections that the city conducts. Uh, Commissioner Troutman's talking about fire inspections. You said something about we're not charging fees, is that the rental?
No, the fire inspection.
Okay. Are the rental, uh, property inspections still being done?
Yes.
And, and those landlords and tenants-
They cost.
Or landlords are, are still making their annual payments for that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes?
I have a few different questions, and others have questions, I'll answer them one by one. The first question, and this probably has been asked before, is there a reason why the hall lights coming into here are, it's not very inviting from a citizen perspective, like the hall light?
Hall lights.
It's the county.
Yeah, it's, that's the county controls it.
The city has no ability to affect, because it's not a very inviting environment when I'm trying to go to this council meeting, and everything is dark.
Yeah, we could ask the, the maintenance guys, the legal lights on.
Which lights are dark? In this hallway?
Yeah, I turned, I turned the lights on in the hall out here when I got here, they were all off.
I think probably because when they close at four thirty, they have janitorial services, and as they clean an area, they turn the lights off. So that's probably what happened.
The good news is, we only have a couple more months.
Well, that was actually another question I, so is there, what is the estimated completion date for the new municipal building slash when is the move over date?
So approximately May of next year.
Any other questions, Alice?
Yeah, um, so I, I've heard a couple different numbers in terms of the bonds, or what's happening with selling the bonds. The website right now says that this was for two point two million dollars. This says two point four million dollars, and earlier on here, two point three three. What is the accurate number?
It's two point two plus fees, right?
The total bar amount on the bond is two point three three.
So the original ordinance said approximately two point four, because we didn't know what all the costs involved would be.
I, I want to, kind of last question, I think. Um, how, I'm very curious about the website, it was brought up last Thursday about, so the website is not hosted by the city itself, it's outsourced to, um, accounting hosting services for website?
So we share a lot of things in this building, and one of the things we share is our host for the website, and it's through a state agency that the county uses, which is the, uh, Association of County Commissioners, Pennsylvania State Association of County Commissioners. So, yeah.
So how does editing the website work? Because I know on Thursday you had said that somebody, hey, it was a proposition about, I don't know, citizen logging platforms for companies and things like that. So how is it, because you guys do update, update the website, so-
Yes.
Do you have joint control of that?
We have kind of- Yes, I, I guess you could say we do have joint control. So whenever there's a major software upgrade, which they're changing the software, then they'll take the whole website and kind of transfer it into the new platform, and then, of course, we would make whatever daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, annual updates that we need to make. So they're in the process of switching the whole thing to a new platform. So once they do that, we'll have the availability to sign on to new services.
Can I actually do a little more, I have a second, my notes. Um, when was the last time Lebanon City was pretty strict, in, in terms of just the entire, like, the outline of Lebanon? It, has it been this way always, or has it been changed?
The boundaries?
Boundaries of the city?
I mean, I know the independent borough was annexed into the city in, was that the eighteen hundred, late eighteen hundred?
Nineteen fifty-one.
Nineteen fifty-one. Well, thank you for that, Mr. Commissioner. Mr. History Bob.
Because it has to do with the fire department.
That's probably the last time that there was a change to the boundaries.
Any other questions this evening?
Wouldn't it have been changed when this school was annexed out there?
And you know, what, what about, like, Ranch Avenue and all of that? That was an annexation, too. That was back when the sewer, because they didn't have public sewer and water services available to them, and it was a more densely populated area, so they needed city services, so that portion, there was some type of an agreement where they were annexed into the city, but I think they're in the Cornwall Lebanon School District, which is really a strange situation. So it was some type of negotiated, I guess, annexation, but I'd have to check to see what year that was as well. And you're talking about the Lebanon School? Yeah, I'm not sure about that, Pat.
Out there in, was classified as Ward Third Sixth.
You mean Fairview High, third Ranch Avenue, yeah. What, you mean the high school was?
The high school, I don't know what, what that, but, uh, no, I'm talking about out there passing asylum and church up, Oak, Oakley Road and some of those places.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about.
But what school are you talking about?
That may have been the sixties.
They're, they're city residents, but they're, they go to Cornwall Lebanon School.
Yeah.
Right. That may have been the sixties, so that may have been the latest one.
I think that's where they had some voting issues as well, with, the ballot is, having just moved into-
Always creates confusion out there.
Yeah, they vote second to second.
Yes.
Look in the index.
Yeah.
Twenty-two nineteen Oak Street burned in nineteen sixty-nine.
Thank you.
Now the city fire, if that helps.
Wow.
Yeah, I said this nineteen sixty, so thank you.
Any other questions this evening? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
The recall is impressive, Commissioner.